Welcome, everybody. If you're watching this, you're watching the Halifax Bota Selectment Meeting for August 8th, 2017. We're currently being filmed by Area 58 Community Access Television, available to you on Community Access Television and YouTube. We're going to start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to read it? Everybody's good? Can I have a motion?
Make the motion that we approve today's agenda.
As it stands, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Selectmen Minutes. Does everyone have an opportunity to read them?
I have.
I will move the regular session toward July 25th for Selectmen Minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vind the warrant number nine for $271,868.16. Ammonite's commitment seven C for $44,305.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number ten for $215,843.51. Vind warrant number eleven for $469,812.61. Withholding warrant number twelve for $77,088.95. Withholding warrant one fourteen, $8,771.42. And mobile park fees for $5,160.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to move the approval of Selectmen's bills, law account, for $4,220. And that's with Dush Williams and Drenzo and Holland Designs in apart, total count. Selectmen's expense account, express newspaper, $40. Law account, Attorney Lawrence Mayo, professional service, general counsel, for August 1st, 2017, $1,588.75. And the last is Selectmen's expense account for Gatehouse Media, Mass., publication of Patriot Ledger, $150. And that completes my presentation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. General Mail, we turn it over to Mr. Sealer.
First thing, one of the things we missed on the last go-around for appointments was to appoint Steve Hayward as tree warden for a term expiring May 16th, 2020, if the board could do that.
Sure. We first have to see how he hugs trees, because you've got to be a tree hugger for this, right?
Well, it's not the only thing he does.
I will make a motion that we appoint Stephen Hayward, or are Stephen Hayward, as tree warden for a term expiring May 16th, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And then also to reappoint Gregory Cohen to the Beautification Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2018.
I will make a motion that we appoint Gregory Cohen to the Beautification Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2018.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
The board had received, or the town had received, a $100 donation from James and Lynda Lunny for the Fitzgerald Garden and maintenance there. I'd like to have the board send a letter of thank you to the Lunnings for doing this.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
On Tarrawood Kettles, there's really been nothing happening, because of course, we know that the proposed sale is happening later this week. My understanding is, from other sources, is that many or all the dogs have been moved out as part of the sale process. But we'll see how things fall out with that, in terms of what the board had done a couple weeks ago, in terms of ordering that all the dogs be removed by the date of the proposed sale of property and the passing of papers. The board had also asked about the license itself, in the sense that the board was dealing with, in essence, a noise complaint, barking dogs complaint, which is under one section of the general laws. The board had also asked about the license, and whether the board could take any action concerning the license if it found this show to be in violation of the statutes or the town's bylaws in regards to kettles. If, at some point in the future, whether it's this license or another one, the board want to take action concerning the license, it would give notice to all the interested parties, a hearing would be held, the notice would have to be out there at least 14 days in advance of the hearing. Then if the board didn't want to take action concerning a license, such as suspension or revocation of the license, you'd have to document the reasons why, including whatever reasons, for instance, whether it was with Tarrawood or another kennel, we'd have to find specific evidence and determinations that they were in violation here and back it up with whatever documents, whether it's personal testimony, it's documentation, whatever records we have, allowing the board to conclude that the requirements weren't being met. You deliver that decision to the license holder via U.S. mail and hand delivery, the person still would have a chance to appeal in court, but at least the board, if it wanted to, whether it was for this license or another, there's an ability to take action concerning a kennel license sometime in the future. But as far as this one is concerned...
It's two separate issues, bark and the bark and nuisance problem, as well as the revocation of license for purchases.
Right. And but since the intention of the license holder right now is for the sale of property, I would say that the board just would wait and see how that falls out, and if it doesn't go away as planned and the board want to take action, now the board knows what the procedures are, if the board wants to do something. You do have requests for use of the Town Hall Green from the Congregational Church for its annual barbecue and barbeque sphere on Saturday, September 16th.
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the town green by the Congregational Church for Saturday, September 16th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And you'd want to tell the board that Senator Bray did send a letter of support in for the Hof's Playground Project to the Division of Conservation Services, and also the state will have a site visit here on Tuesday, April 15th at 3:00 p.m. to take a look at the Hof's Playground. August 15th, sorry, yes.
I know the Hof's people...
Yes, and I've also notified Dick Steele, too, so you and I could be notified, but obviously the board's welcome to the site visit also. We had an email from, I guess, an abut to Ellis Auto Body several months ago. The board had seen this, this was a site player review for a 50-by-50 storage building that was going to be constructed at Ellis Auto Body. It was a use by right, it didn't require variances, it didn't require special permits, it was simply site player review. Under site player review, abutters don't get notified about a building or anything else going up, so the abutters weren't notified in this case, and this person was perturbed that, in fact, the abutters didn't have a chance to weigh in on that. But I went over the procedures with her, and, you know, she's probably not happy about it, but at least she has that information. We had received emails from, I guess, a couple of the towns up on the North Shore. You may have seen some articles in the newspapers about this. There's some limited Wi-Fi service on the MBTA commuter rail.
Very limited.
The MBTA is proposing putting up a series of monopoles that are about 75 feet high. I mean, so often...
In someone's backyard.
Well, it could always be in somebody's backyard. But in this case, on the North Shore, I guess some of them would be in what are considered to be historic or cultural districts, and I guess there's some backlash against having those monopoles in those areas. So what those communities have done is notified all the other communities, both on the North Shore and the South Shore, about this. I've seen the plan for the Kingston Plymouth Line, there'd be only one pole in Halifax that would be located by the railroad tracks on Aldana Road, not on the road itself, obviously, but by the tracks. But if you remember, a fair amount of Aldana parallels the tracks to a certain point, it should be in that section. If for some reason the board wanted public input and then to have the MBTA, you know, come in and talk about it, whatever, we could set something like that up. We would have a public meeting, invite MBTA to come in, we'd notify the folks prior on Aldana Road.
I'd like to see this pretty empty, any kind of concerns, anything, if we can have a meeting with the MBTA.
That would reduce the shock, that.
Yeah, it would. I'd like to be proactive, you know, thinking.
Okay, well, then if the board's fine, I'll consult with the MBTA and see if someone can come into one of the Selectmen's meetings, and once I get that set up, I'll notify the folks on Aldana Road.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing to do for them.
Lauren Scher would like to put up temporary yard sale signs at either end of Pine Street for a yard sale on August 12th and 13th. She actually asked for permission.
I know.
Yeah, she'd be the first one.
I would recommend granting it, because the board can't grant it. In general, yard sale signs aren't legally allowed off the seller's property, but obviously, as you've just said, many people ignore this, so I'd recommend approval of...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, let's see. Shot garden, okay. So I'm still waiting to hear from the landscaping companies here in Halifax, if any of them are interested. I sent a mailing out to them for the maintenance of Fitzgerald Garden, I've not heard back from anybody at this point. And as far as Nate Coombs' plan to have benches over by the memorial area across the street, I know he had reached out to the Historic District and the Beautification Committee. I checked in with him a few days ago to see whether he had gotten any feedback. I know the Beautification Committee had asked about a number of benches, things like that, but I haven't seen any more correspondence go back and forth.
Did he check with the Veterans Agent? Because again, I think that's almost more important than...
Well, Will, in fact, wrote, "I think you have a wonderful plan for the benches. Please consider this as my approval to move ahead."
Okay.
So Veterans Agent's fine, yeah. So I'm waiting to hear about the other two also.
Okay.
Pots and Pond and Boating Bylaws, Ed Stewart had called while I was on vacation. He's, I know, been for a number of years opposed to motorboats and jet skis on the pond. I guess he called about that again while I was on vacation. The procedure is that, obviously, we have boating bylaws here in town, and the town could vote to make changes in the boating bylaws. If they do, they still have to be reviewed by the AG's office and the Environmental Police. One of the things that's changed in the interim, because the last time we were doing major changes was 20 years ago, is we do now have stormwater management, in that we're going to have to be running programs to prevent pollution going into the ponds, which is going to be difficult to reconcile if we're then condoning polluting the pond with motorboats having the same pollutants coming in, let's say, off the street from wash from the street versus gasoline, oil, and such coming from the motorboats.
The only, maybe I'm wrong, doesn't the state own the ramp? We can't forcefully...
No, the state doesn't own the ramp. We own the property. It's a state boat ramp, and having them do the renovations said anybody can use the boat ramp, so the regulations would apply to everybody using the pond if we made a change. Mr. Stewart's not come in, he's not come in for an appointment or anything like that. I just wanted to review the situation. I had contacted the Environmental Police, pointing out that there's this incongruity between now with the changes with the MS4 permits and with dealing with ponds. They're not, apparently, at this point, ready to take any position one way or the other. Basically said, if you ever change them, we'll review them.
So Charlie, do you think it's something that we should discuss, maybe at a working group meeting for the Mont Ponce? I know that we typically just talk about algae, but maybe that we could have a conversation. I know people have been super busy this summer, but if we could plan something for September for a working group meeting, I think it would be a great place.
It's a contributing factor to the pond's, you know, problems. So I mean, it's natural segue to talk about the boats being on the water, because they're, not only the stuff run off from the highway, but the boats also, a lot of them coming in from the ocean and flooding itself.
Right, right, exactly.
Flush the boats out, so.
If you could put me on the list for anything you have... Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Chief.
I guess it's about 7:45, and you have an appointment, I believe.
I know we're here to talk about test control, Cameron.
Yeah.
Well, you could then send...
Let's just do Box, quick.
Okay, so you could send a thank you letter to Burgess Management Company. They put out some termite traps and such around the old schoolhouse and the blacksmith shop in behalf of the Historical Commission.
Very generous, so I make a motion that we send a letter of gratitude for their donation of time and supplies.
Hold on, I'll be seconded. Unanimous. Unanimous? Yeah, I'm assuming you guys are both voting for it, seeing as you moved it and seconded it.
Yes.
Okay, Mel, do you want to?
Oh, yes. Hello. How are you? I get to see you twice in a week. This is like the best.
Wow. Can I have your order there?
I'm just here to say, you know, if you could just leave the recycling fee as is, I would be very happy.
Oh, you would?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Part of me thought you were going to come in here and ask for a...
Well, I'm recommending that it go down, actually, to 48, but it's not a material thing one way or the other.
$2, yeah.
Yeah, but we did run a surplus on the recycling program this past year, and bringing it down a couple more eliminates the surplus. The other side of the coin is that we've lost money on the solid waste portion, so the two things balance them off. And both things contribute to the fund balance for the Solid Waste and Recycling Fund, so...
And I think, really, for the $2, I think that we've seen in the years that we've tried to decrease it, that sometimes things sort of catch us up in a year or two, so that just maybe keeping it stable at the $50, and that gives us a little bit of a cushion for any improvements that need to be done. I know that we just took a lot out of there to do a couple of capital item repairs.
Yes, and, you know, we're actually, I applied for a grant for a compactor, and we're going to have to have, I'm going to need money to pay for like the cement pad, and then the electricity, that's going to be expensive to hook it up, so I need money for that. I can't see how we wouldn't get the grant, but more money has to be available to make a hole.
To do the peripheral, I see.
Preparation.
Yeah, and that'll save a lot of money in the end, because that'll probably only get pulled out maybe once a month, where right now we're being pulled out three, probably six times a month. So all those halls, all that money, you know, will be a big savings.
Okay, awesome. Do you want me to make a motion?
Do you want to hear from Steve at all?
Trying to.
Maybe you should.
I agree with you.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to make a motion that we keep the recycling fee at $50 for the upcoming year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I do recommend, not on this particular question, maybe sometime this winter, probably later in the winter, January, February, to have the oil come back, we can talk about the trash fees.
Yes.
Because we are going to be completing our current contract with CMAS, which is where the trash, not the recycling, what the trash is brought to. And we're paying probably significantly more money per ton versus right now via the contract than the current market rate is like, versus other possible places we could bring the trash to. We're running into a situation that our costs are artificially higher than the cost of some of the private haulers right now, which unfortunately is causing us to lose some business. And in order for this to remain a viable operation, we may have to be lowering our costs, and one of the ways is to get a better price on the tipping end of it.
Our contract ends June 2018. It's going to be a happy, happy day.
Yeah.
So if we, you know, we can have this conversation, figure out how we go out to bid or whatever for a new tipping, how long we want to go out for, and then start that process, and then maybe be able to adjust the bag and tag fee system accordingly.
Should we plan on meeting in November, like December? Because we would want to probably...
Yeah, that's fine, because we also have to go to bid for a new trash haul company to prevent the trash.
All of them come up with ones.
Well, this was a 10-year, the one that was, the CMAS one.
I'm not old enough to remember that.
Yeah.
Not mine. We'll put a date together for early in the winter, then, either late November or early December.
Yeah, awesome.
So I have a plan.
Thank you so much for coming in. It was nice seeing you. I just saw you last night, too.
Yeah.
Leaves, leaves.
I like the wind, though, I...
We did receive a resignation from Caesar Klaroff, who resigned from the fireworks committee effective July 21st because of his other commitments with the town and with other entities.
I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to Caesar, because, you know, he was somebody that wasn't even a resident to our community, and he really did dedicate to it.
He put in a lot of effort.
Just a letter of thanks.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Remind, there's the Council on Aging Cookout next week on the 16th. The board's invited, but needs RSVP, so if you can help, Pam or myself...
So you don't know how many chickens to kill?
That's about it. Money per customer, something like that.
Can you just let them know I'll be there? Thank you.
Likewise.
Likewise.
A policy request.
Unless I have a medical emergency.
We'll post it. I'll post it, because when somebody's going to talk to you about town business, if you're there, they're not going to be talking about your musical tastes.
Invariably.
Yes. We did get a written note from the Building Committee. They had bought some Gatorade and water back in, I guess, the middle of July, when we had, one of the couple of heat waves we had for the employees were out, essentially out in the field doing, replacing the building siding at the Albert Carron Schoolhouse. I don't have a real problem with it, in the sense of, obviously, it was probably more a health and safety issue, they weren't prepared for something like that, so I would recommend approval for this particular expense. However, what I would want the board to tell the Building Committee is, in the future, get some large plastic jugs, you know, coolers type, and then fill them, because the coolers, those are legitimate purchases, and if they just need to fill them...
And they don't disappear as fast as the individual judge might.
Right. So if the board would approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Now, the next thing I was thinking about this today...
Take that as a yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. No, I just looked at the next, I legit was just thinking about this, and meant to ask Troy earlier about this.
Okay. Well, I know that Stephen, in fact, mentioned that he had some 30 mile per hour signs that he could place on Lincoln Street on a temporary basis, which I believe he's done.
So have they been naughty?
They haven't really been moving that fast up and down the street, because they can't, you know, it's, with the traffic going both ways, it's slowing down, but I'm sure there is probably a period of time where they sort of move...
Dirt removal.
Yeah. We've got no calls.
Yeah.
I noticed they started out last week...
Well, the biggest part is people having to move over so they can get down the road, because it's taken up.
I noticed they're coming out, coming to the way, too.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't part of the plan.
That wasn't part of the agreement.
All you've got, well, trying to keep an eye on it, see if that's going to be routine or not, but... Yeah, because we took, and all the photographs and the worry about the roads, where's...
It wasn't Lincoln Street, yeah.
We did get a town bank form from Michael Chapin, he's interested in soaring on the ZBA. There is a vacancy for an alternate on the ZBA, so I forwarded the town bank form to the ZBA for their review.
Mike has some history of service on ZBA, so he'd be a good addition, in my opinion.
You need a move on that now?
No, no, there's nothing yet, unless, if the ZBA's interested in having him as an alternate, they'll recommend him, and we'll set up a meeting for him to come in and meet with the board. Illegal dog complaint procedure, the police chief's been working on updating the dispatch directives, in the sense of who to call and on what order, and things like that.
Yeah, I saw that.
And while the board helps review it, I want to make sure the board's Selectmen's side also, if you had any things that you want to change. I know Kathy's been, Brian's been in touch with the chief about that.
Perhaps I missed it, that you, concerning domestic animals, not dogs or cats or whatever, but horses and cows, things of that nature.
It covers everything. It started out, usually, it was just a very simple directive to dispatch.
Reference to.
And as I said, talking in conversation, it's almost turning into a policy and procedure type thing, so it's getting a little more in-depth than it was originally intended, but that's fine. It's, we're just getting it tweaked and we'll have another draft come up later.
Generations is having a clothing drive in connection with their yard sale that's happening August 26th. The Epilepsy Foundation will pick up the clothes, and I'm sold items from the yard sale at 2:00 p.m. on that date. They'd like to store the collected clothing at Town Hall, presumably in the basement. I reached out to Jerry, I didn't get any feedback saying, please don't do this.
Where, that...
Probably the room directly below us has some availability.
Yeah. That could take up a lot of space.
Well, it'd be for another two and a half weeks.
I mean, I don't have any objections to them, just logistically, how you get around.
So if the board were to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Neither Pam nor myself had this on our calendar for the Town Hall Green, so I wanted to make sure that it was on the record that the board would approve use of the Town Hall Green on Saturday, September 23rd, from noon to 2:00, for that first responders barbecue.
They have a barbecue?
Well, some sort of event here.
So thank you to the, there's a group of people who got together and they want to do a thank you to first responders, and they're inviting anybody who would like to come, and they're having a barbecue, and just different, they're going to give gift cards away, and...
Is this extended outside of the town, or is it just for the town's people?
It's just for our town departments right now.
Okay. So Halifax First Responders Appreciation Day barbecue, 12 to 2:00, at Town Hall Green. Join us as we honor the dedicated men and women who were always there to help and protect us, and they'll have, as mentioned, food games and activities.
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the town green, interest September 23rd.
I'll second that. Just wondering, are they going to resuscitate a nanny over there?
All those in favor?
That would be me.
Right. Well, the first responders, I mean, they have the equipment out there.
I'll call that unanimous.
Yadda, yadda, I can help.
Sealer of Waits and Measures, I heard back from Herb Wolfher, he did say, in fact, he has the town of Halifax's equipment.
How awesome is that?
And he will transfer that equipment back to whoever is appointed, I assume, tonight, once we've appointed somebody, and I'll make sure he has the contact information and get in touch with him, so we don't have to buy new equipment or anything like that.
Has everybody had a chance to review and recall the interviews?
Yes.
I'm all set. I was impressed with the second interview, personally came through. I think, number one, number two, both had a great deal of experience, but number two seemed to be in the mix at this point in time. At least that's what I got from the interview.
Can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Dave Moore as our sealer of Waits and Measures with the term expiring June 30th, 2018. Yeah.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll notify Ms. Wolfher about that. Street sweeping, we got a thank you letter from a group of residents thanking Steve Hayward for procuring the services of the street sweeper. The one that we have has been out of commission, so we got a company come out and get the work done. They really were very happy with the work that was done and how the roads look after.
It's nice that the residents recognize that.
Right, don't recycle the fee. One-day liquor license, we'll wait for that appointment. Pots and Pond, just so the board knows that it continues to be open. We also have the four-by-four signs now are at the four locations, so it's very prominent whether that particular section of the pond is open or closed, so we'll just continue to cross our fingers, and maybe we can go through the rest of the summer and stay open, it'd be great. Let's see. Dispatching the resignation, we had a letter from Joy Firth sending in her resignation, notice effective August 25th. She's been working as a dispatcher for the town for 33 years, so obviously I'd like the board to send her a thank you letter.
Absolutely. With our gratitude for all the years of service that she's put in.
Yeah, she's a really, really very special lady and has really dedicated a lot of her life to our community, so, yep.
Take that as a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On Birch Pond in the Elm Street access, I know the board was concerned about drains, so I contacted Jason Zimmer again. He wrote, will you address any concerns regarding the access drive parking with the planning board will be adding a small crushed stone drainage swale on the side of the roadway, being the access roadway, and the roadway will be graded in a manner to direct any minimal drainage to the base of the slope and away from the invite's lot. Cutting down the steepness of the slope will actually reduce any drainage flows in the area.
Okay, that was my major concern, because I didn't want all of a sudden if people's cars floating away.
Um, we have the next meeting with the architect and construction company and the owners project manager and such for the school repair projects tomorrow morning. During the last couple of weeks, we've got a lot of correspondence on this and I've outlined what's going on, just basically chronology. There were two, probably were actually three action items, even though I didn't mention a third one because I think we, because what I didn't mention was on the chimneys. I did talk to Rob, there's been a fair amount of discussion about how to handle the repair or complete, not demolition, but, what do you call it, how would you call it? Well, repair, but how temporary do we do it and what type of materials we use, whether it's going to be the masonry stucco or do we melt, do metal cladding and everything? I talked to Rob and he wanted to get a better idea. First of all, I think everybody's agreement, at least on the town side, that whatever's done needs to last the length of the time of the roof worked, so that it's not going to be a temporary.
At least 20, the specs called for patching and that was the objection.
Right. So Rob had said he'd like to go in tomorrow morning to talk more about all the interest in price, get better idea of what the costs are like, and if we go to metal, then I need to contact the historic district again, because I think they'd be, they'd be more interested in doing the masonry. But first I got, I think we need to talk about that tomorrow morning. So there's an action item in the sense of, at some point we need to make a decision about that, but I'm not asking the board to make any decisions about it tonight.
My understanding is that they will have some pricing for tomorrow, so.
But, may I just ask, I know that we're meeting tomorrow morning, should we have a vote in place so that when a decision, like, I don't want to delay for another two weeks because we seem to be, is that an issue?
We can't delay it because it's going, the work, whatever work's going to be done is going to be done this week.
So we, right, so we, we don't have to do an official?
Well, I can, I can, I think I could take your recommendation, yes, so if the board wants to do.
Yes, that way we have something in place, so I'll make a recommendation that we, after review.
No, I was gonna say, it's gotten a little confusing. I ended up stepping into it a little bit myself on Friday as to what our intent was, so we do need to kind of clarify a couple of things. Originally, our intent was to, to go with metal on all the chimneys, and then the historical question came up, and then we made reference to the fact that the specs called out patching and that's really not the best way to go on a chimney of masonry that's that old. So the idea was to strip it down and start from scratch on the masonry with new wire and new latten. The confusion came in as to what historical actually said okay to, whether it was either or, or just the masonry, or I'm not sure they got properly presented the concept of the metal.
Yeah, because I thought, I was under the impression we had four chimneys, one of which was metal clad, now, and three were masonry, and basically my understanding was, okay, we need to get them repaired, but we'll leave them in the same, the three masonry will stay masonry, the one metal will stay metal.
Right. Except that they're, they're wood.
Okay.
And, and the two in the front are masonry, so that's where the confusion came up, and that's where hopefully we can get that cleared up tomorrow morning.
Because it's not something that people are going to be driving by and really taking notice of the material.
No, I mean, there's, there's the school of thought that they should all be the same.
Okay.
And, and the wooden ones definitely should be.
Well, the point, the point is, the construction is something that's going to be long lasting and not something that's going to be down in the next 20 years or so.
So my question, and I mean no disrespect to the historical people, is that we are, we are charged with providing, this is an expensive project, providing something that's going to be long lasting, and so I.
I don't know that they had all the options presented, so that was, it got a little confusing. So that's what hopefully we can try to get cleared up tomorrow.
What time is the meeting?
9:30.
Oh, God.
Do you want me to make a motion or no?
I don't know that we need a motion.
Well, I guess the question is, I think what Kim's saying is, if we need to make, if a decision has to be made and has to come through the board's selectmen, what, essentially whether it's delegating to whoever's there, um, or.
Right, that we have a decision in place so that we don't have to do an emergency.
Yeah, that's fine.
So my motion would be, whatever the proper material that's decided, that the project of fixing those chimneys move forward. Is that proper? I don't, you know.
You didn't say much. You said a lot, but it wasn't anything definitive.
They just make sure they fix it, okay?
The bottom line is, the bottom line is, leave it to the experts to develop.
Or consensus. Maybe I'll try, I, so if I went to see John tomorrow morning before the meeting, what should I now be telling?
I'd ask him if he had an issue with metal if we were to go that route.
For all four?
For all four.
Okay.
Right now, the rear two, we're already determined to go with the, with the metal. The front two are the ones that would be.
Okay.
Okay, so that, yeah.
Okay.
That's my motion. What, what might this Bob say?
To, to follow the recommendation from the.
Experts.
Well, you don't have to narrow it down to a couple of people.
I'm gonna say Tom.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine. Animal Building Inspector in Charlie.
Yes, in Charlie. And I'm just.
Follow the vision of Thomas Millis.
And the building inspector. And Charlie. One, three.
Yeah, that way it isn't.
Yeah.
If it turns out to be the wrong decision, I don't hang by myself.
Exactly. I love that.
Well, we don't want to stand up the hole in the chimney to gather for the next 40 years.
So we can finish.
I seconded, thirded, and every other time.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Can I go for myself? No, I'm gonna abstain.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Still, still Carrie.
I made that so confusing.
No. No. So the action items, other than that, that I need, he's abstaining. The action items I need done are, first is, there's a request from Vert, from Habib and Associates for, no, let's see, sorry, let me backtrack a minute. Kate Way had asked for a change order for the replacement of the duct work within the Renzor heating unit.
Right.
Replacement of the existing duct work was not included in the original contract documents, and Vertex is recommending approval of the change order.
Okay, so you need a motion for that?
Or at least discussion at the, at the beginning, yeah.
I mean, I thought.
If we need to replace it, we need to replace it, there's not much discussion.
Is it, is it part of the cost fact, been factored in as part of the cost?
Well, we have, we have a contingency specific, sort of, we can do things like this.
We do have money for it, so I'll make a motion that we approve the.
Additional work that needs to be done.
Why, I'm really beginning to.
So the, the proposed change order number three and R, like Rabbit, R for Rabbit.
Or Roy.
Or Robert.
Or Rabbit.
Robert Roy.
Rob Roy. So moved.
That was, we, can I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second item I need action is on Habib's and Associates' request for funding for the hazmat testing for the windows, doors project, which is absolutely necessary, there's no, I mean, for any number of reasons, we need to get it done, but, so if the board would approve that?
Sommo.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, electricity aggregation update, the mailing for electricity aggregation has been sent out and most, if not all, the residents have received the mailing. We did our presentation here last night, which is going to be broadcast on cable, I hope, later this week. We had about two dozen residents in attendance, we had someone from Colonial Power here to talk about it, I was there also to do a little give and take about some of the real more basic questions and make sure that everybody's concerns were covered. Information's available about the program on the town website. Residents who wish to participate in the program, who already have a designated supplier should not be getting the mailing, but if they do, they should in fact send it back with the opt-out box checked off. If someone does not want to participate in the program, they can send back the mailing, they can go on the website for Colonial Power, they can do it by phone, there's, those are the options of going through the opt-out process.
The parameters changed a little bit on the cards from what we spoke about several weeks ago. It's really the business end that looks like for the next couple of months might be paying slightly more.
Um.
I think those, that one was at 10. We were at 92 versus 94.
The commercial might be paying more, but the residential will be a little bit less for these two months.
Two months, right.
National grid. Then what will happen is, in September, probably by late September, we'll know what the national grid price is for November 1st through April 30th.
And then you can make.
And then people.
And they avoid, what do they, what do they deem the entries to be?
We don't know until, until we get, in general, the winter rates are always higher than the summer rates. So I would expect whatever national grid's charging right now, it will be more starting November 1st.
There was a 12 last year, so it was considerable.
I mean, I was quite pleased, there were about 25 people that actually came. And Charlie, you did a tremendous job sort of playing the what if and asking the questions that, you know.
That, that people should be asking.
Right. So I want to thank you first.
Yeah, I think so far it's worked out better than some of our neighbors.
Yes. Our neighbors, some of our neighbors are not having a.
They didn't want to hear it.
Yes.
It wasn't the campaign as fluently as we did.
So, you know, and I do understand for many people, there's just a basic objection to being told that now, you know, if you don't do something, we're changing, and I understand where they're coming from, but it was the only way of running this program. This is, it's allowed, the only way you do it is under the state legislation, the state legislation says you've got to do it on an opt-out basis, so I wanted to go ahead. We did bring it to town meeting last May, not three months ago, but in '16, there was a discussion about that. I know specifically we talked about the fact that people would have to opt out. So I understand for some people, they're caught unaware of it, but we're trying to give them as easy a way, if they do want to opt out, as possible. And the other thing is, whether people want to stay in, go out, stay in, go out, they can do it as many times as they want back and forth without any fee, so that if, for instance, they want to opt out today, they can do so, and then when they hear the, what the national grid rate is going to be on November 1st, they want to opt in again, they can do that.
The only thing I didn't hear is there a lag time, well, what is the lag?
Well, it's usually a month to two months, so if they, you know, in September, they still should be able to catch the wave for November 1st. And let's see, the only other thing I have is, there's an amendment adding the full-time recycling highway employee to the bargaining agreement with the Highway Cemetery Department, there are two copies assigned. The board would, board had previously approved this, but I just need to pass around for signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Outside of the appointments we have, do we have anything else?
No road cuts.
We don't, we don't have an appointment with Mudfest, right? We're not swinging mud tonight?
I don't know about the latter, but we do have an appointment.
We are not swinging mud.
It's been too dry for one.
We'll be out, we'll be out here at 8:17.
No, not yet. So, I mean, if the board would.
There you go, serping your authority.
Your authority.
Well, did you, what's the date that we're gonna have the Mudfest, like, since you're here?
Bob, why, Bob, Bob, where you come out from?
I was just, this is crazy, this is, I thought I said something statement, it's gonna be exactly from June.
Okay, same, same, okay, yeah, okay. How are you? I think it's 26th in June, so I think it's 8, 8:00, 6:00, I'm pretty.
Well, 6, 6 would be pretty late in November.
Yeah, 5.
You're on the 5, you're on the, oh, okay, 5.
The sun's down.
Yeah, okay.
Make sure the police officers get there prior.
Okay.
Check the food, right?
Yes.
Any progress on the appeals?
Yeah, I, I, I haven't, I thought it, the hours went well, I hadn't heard any feedback from any of the neighbors, I didn't see anything on Facebook, I just got the thumbs up from the police chief.
I'm asking if, the way that we've incorporated 4H and, you know, tractors and stuff like that, to be present and everything, if there's anything from suggestions from the board to make it more in conjunction with farming that.
I, I don't know that I want to get into that at this point.
Yeah.
Any suggestions?
No, I think with the pending litigation, we need to, yeah.
Unless you want to, unless.
Yeah, no, not.
Unless you want to plant the corn after you get to plowing it up with all the mud.
Everybody's not pulling a lot. But, but it's just a suggestion to throw out there.
Yeah, because we have the pending litigation, I don't think that we should be in any position to discuss that. I think it needs to be a really quick approval of your dates and.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They said they have.
Okay.
And what date are you looking for?
The corn comes down two days.
Uh-huh. The maize.
Yes.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we approve Mudfest for the dates that were requested.
With the same stipulations.
With the same, yes, with the same stipulations that were on the last permit.
Outside of the change in hours because of, obviously, we've got less daylight.
Well, the other trucks got headlights on, don't they?
It's just awful thought, bro, rethinking.
No, it's like cars where they, they don't actually have headlights on.
They don't have headlights on.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
See? It's, it's like 8:16.
I'm out of here.
Have a good night.
Take care. All right, all right, I'll call, I'll email you, I'll call you. Pick up the.
How many of you bodyguards lost in here?
Take care.
Glad to see you.
I know it's, I know, I don't know that everybody who is expected to be here at 8:30 for the one day liquor license is here.
And everybody's sober, right? There's nobody, there's nobody.
How are you?
Still on the wagon.
So come on up?
Okay.
Don't be afraid, Kim will hurt you.
A little bit. The chief says, chief says a little bit.
A poquito.
So it's essentially exactly the same.
Would you just introduce yourself for the camera?
Sorry, I'm Jeff Papas, the chairman and founder of the Silver Oak Chamber, turn on the collective operations chairman, Richie, and our caterer, sitting right, right behind us.
I'm just sorry to interrupt, were you expecting Mr. Clausen or either father or son to be here?
No, in fact, you know, to be clear, these are, these are separate institutions, separate events, separate, I mean, we're a 501(c)(3). We lease the property from Scott, you know, every week, and have a long-term lease, but there's no other fiduciary connections. So we're essentially running the same event we ran last year, I mean, I think plus or minus one day because the federation sometimes moves the calendar just a bit, I think it's one day off from last year, but it's, it's the liquor license for Sunday, again, it's limited to the VIT tent, which is on a segregated berm and a 350-foot tent. We have town officials there anyway because of EMTs and ambulance services and stuff as we did last year. I think the difference, and I've never entirely understood the ramifications, but, you know, we're, we're using a larger caterer, a lot of roots and community here in Plymouth, who's licensed, has a mass state liquor license. Of course, we also use serve-safe, you know, servers. Again, we don't sell it. Now, the reason I think we're here is because people buy the tables, right? Most of them are corporate sponsors. But it's literally the same drill, you know, sort of same time, same channel. We're limited, we can't expand it any further because the way that property is situated with that berm, we can only fit 40 tables in there. Although, Neston's been running TV commercials during all the Red Sox games this year, and our phones are ringing out, so I think we'll have a much bigger general admission crowd. I mean, it's, I had a lady call me the other day, wanted me to pick her up at her house at 9 o'clock and wait.
You told you'd be on.
She was really elderly. But there's obviously no liquor outside of that restricted area. And if you remember, everybody has to have an ID bracelet in order to enter. We've got security staff at both entrances, which honestly, we do because, you know, there's several tens of thousands of dollars of catering in there. We can't be feeding the general public. And it does, it can get confusing without that. So that's the kind of admission and identification system. I know that Alden Park has been down to the Board of Health and gone through, you know, all of the...
And we've been, we've been serving that property for the previous three events this year already.
Oh.
So this would be our fourth and fifth, and that's going Silver Oak as the fourth, and then there's one following week. But we've been there all season already, so...
Wonderful.
Can I just ask the chief, I assume, I don't recall any incidents or any problems. I'm assuming that is the correct assumption?
Nothing on my end.
No fermented oats, the horses aren't running straight?
The horses are high-strung enough without adding to it. They were sold out this year. We've got about 500 horses. We've got Olympic teams smaller than the world, probably. Last time I counted, I think we had 21 Olympians.
And what date is this going to take?
It runs from Wednesday, the 16th, through Sunday, the 20th. Sunday, the 20th being the big day. Remember last year, I invited you to come out. If you know nothing about horses and you, you know, completely sort of oblivious to this, it's still visually something. I mean, these horses, you know, in our, in our week are jumping Olympic-sized fences. They're 1,500-pound animals that are eight feet in the air.
I called some of it on the cable.
Yeah, well, that's right, because it'll run the following, so a week from the 20th, from the 27th to 7 p.m., it'll be there on television. Last year, they had 5 million viewers. So it's great exposure. But it's not the same thing as being there because it literally shakes the ground.
Really?
Oh, yeah. I mean, these are very big muscular animals. The profits this year go to an organization called Danny and Ron's Dog Rescue, who has, they started right after Katrina, have rescued, rehabilitated, adopted, chipped, neutered, and spayed, and placed over 10,000 dogs now. So that's our, you know, sort of chosen charity. It sometimes varies year to year, but I think Danny and Ron's is going to be with us. I mean, all the horse people are dog crazy, myself included, to this organization. But it's actually two guys down in Wellington, Florida, who bought a huge farm, and they not only go and rescue these dogs from all over the south and Puerto Rico, they bring them back to their farm, and they live with them for six months to rehabilitate them before they place them.
So isn't Wellington a very, that's a very horse...
Oh, it's, yeah.
Very, yeah, it's right near West Palm Beach or Palm Beach.
Sharon calls it the Cinderella Recon.
Yes, yes.
It's insane. There are more private jets there Thursday to Sunday from October to April than there are commercial planes.
Yes.
There are 8,000 performance sport horses on that property for the 16 weeks.
Because there's polo and there's also...
Polo's a small thing.
Yeah.
By comparison to the show jumping, but literally what happens is the entire world who aren't in climates that are suitable aggregate in that one place, and there's $16 million worth of prize money, and it's, the economics of it are just cuckoo. Whereas a horse bought yesterday will actually be the Sunday by a rider from Qatar that they just paid $27.4 million for, one horse. At least we'll be able to step on a rock.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, they're athletes.
Yeah.
Trust me, anything can happen.
I will...
So we need a motion?
I will make a motion.
I have a couple of questions, if you ask, don't hide. Okay, so will you be delivering alcohol on a certain day? Will it be on Sunday, or will you bring it in on Saturday, serve it on Sunday, and then take it away on Monday? Or if we're your caterer, will you...
Caterer will be handling all the liquor. We won't handle it.
When we're ready, restrictions, it's bring it in same day, take it out same day.
So that's what you're going to do? Because like last year, I think the person that, we let you guys take it in?
Yeah, we brought in, the liquor is, San Adams is the sponsor, so, which is terrific. They literally gave us a truck full of beer, and we had that guy go pick up, and now we just do it all through the caterer's license.
That day, everything's okay, that day. That day, everything's okay.
In and out.
Okay, that day.
Good question, Pam.
It did come up last year.
Yeah, you gave it yesterday.
I did give you guys yesterday, because the ABC, C, F, what was the other thing? And so you're only doing wine, is that correct?
Beer and wine.
Okay, it's right here, the circle, there's a charitable wine pouring, and then we've got one day beer and wine, so I think we need to change that.
Yeah, I think the form was a little, I mean, it was neat, but...
All right, so, can I change it? Okay, so I'm just going to cross that off, and then go like that, okay. And we got 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. I think last year it was 12 o'clock.
To be honest, I bet, logistically, if you think it through, that alcohol will probably come on the property before 11. His opening ceremonies are 10:30, so I wouldn't be surprised if the alcohol's on the property.
Okay, what would I do? Serve in beer and wine?
We won't be serving it then.
So you got the nude, okay, so you, okay.
But just, full disclosure, it'll be on the property.
Probably at 11, okay, but have you served at 12?
Yeah.
Okay, correct, okay, that's cool. And took 12 to 4, okay, that's fine.
So Charlie, we should be done at 11:45.
You and I, maybe the last people had a table for you last year.
I was in Africa.
Oh, that's a recent voice, Gibbs.
I was close, but not there.
Now, they have had a variety of yacht clubs. Someone is there from Rhode Island, I might be interested.
Well, I would, when they start having falconry and, you know, demonstrations, then I'll come down.
I know, I would love to come, but I think we have to be very careful about the gift, too.
There was something about the value of the gift.
Yeah, that's what...
Oh, you know, you're right.
He gave us the value, so we could walk it now.
And there's another, there's a...
Should we get the non-VIP tables?
There's other ways we can reel it out. There's a rider stamp with all kinds of...
Just a folding chair is good for me.
Or I'll sit there and I won't eat.
We'll bring your folding chair.
Property, have you seen the property or no?
I've seen it.
I've been on the property for a lot of years.
It's a beautiful property.
But I think, I think it's hard to imagine what goes on at an event of this scale, so to get the time...
Yes, I've been on property for other horse shows, but have never watched. I've been there for town business.
Well, in Scott's, you know, more typical horse shows, it's, you know, it's a lot of kids and ponies and stuff. It's in front of, it's a great family thing, but now we're talking about 200 athletes in the world.
Don't you think I'm getting close to a horse show as I'm a saratoga?
That's not a horse show.
They were riding. They were riding, they were horse show.
Well, that's, that's called gambling.
No, they were going.
There's no betting at Silver Oak.
You go into the horse park, and there are the horses, full race.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license for August 20th from 11 to 4.
Do I have a second?
Let me take a moment.
Thinking about the liquor or thinking about the second?
Well, I don't drink, so I'm going to get something.
Oh, I know, that's what I was getting.
Well, Alden Park's food is totally dive-old.
It really is.
Thank you.
It, one of my favorite places.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. You name it.
Good luck.
Yeah, really. Awesome.
And chief, we will have the breathalyzer available in case.
You worried about the chief or...
No, you won't. And they'll be checking my mouth for shrimp.
I don't know, he's a tortoise, I guess.
Well, that's okay. We can get in trouble with that.
All right. You got any more questions? Just a moment.
Have a wonderful show.
I'm going to make this up tomorrow, the license, and I'll have the board sign, and I'll mail it to you. It's a $5 thing. Yeah, so I'll get into the mail as soon as possible because...
We expect it to be in euros.
I'll have them signed.
In euros? Actually, look at the exchange right now, you're almost better off in dollars.
Yeah, I can, yeah. What's this, pick it up? Can you pick it up here? Because right now, I'll be back in the office in this point on. So you're in the area? Yeah, I'll be back before 4:00. So I can pick it up late Monday? Yeah, that's fine, by that time they should sign.
Yeah, that'll probably be just as easy.
So I'll always come to the office on Monday and get it. Sometimes, come in here. Yeah, I'll be here.
Thank you for bringing a little culture to Halifax.
No, really, really, thank you.
But we are the Halifax sporting event of the year.
We were.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
That doesn't surprise me somehow.
I'm sorry, we just, we just had that...
Girl softball weekend.
We had the girl softball, over the weekend, the tournament, that was, you know...
Well, we have, we have a farm volleyball tournament on Saturday night, which has become like insanely popular.
Right, so who cleans up the yard before you put the net on?
Yeah, maybe we can have a town hall team.
There we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, good luck.
In connection, however, and this was obviously a separate issue, but with Fieldstone Farm...
Have we received that paperwork from them?
No, it's still in court, as far as I know, waiting for signature. But Mr. Clausen has been acting in terms of that the new agreement is the valid one. Obviously, the only way, in fact, we could be holding the horse show this coming week is that the new agreement is considered to be valid because the previous agreement only allowed for four multi-day shows. The coming one on the 16th to the 20th is the fifth, and then there's another one the following week, which would be six. So I'm sure Mr. Clausen's operating under the new agreement, even though the court has not signed off on it. There are a few things I think I need to send a note to Mr. Clausen about. One is in terms of the requirements under the consent agreement. He's supposed to provide an updated schedule. Obviously, he sent one back in January, but for instance, it did include this coming horse show, so I'm going to ask him to please provide an update and to remind him that he needs to do that when there are changes in the schedule. We don't have an alternate contact for the horse shows. He's required to do that. I'm sure it may very well be his son, but we don't actually have anything formal saying who the alternate contact is for the various horse shows. I know that he's been in touch, he or his representative has been in touch with the fire chief about EMS paramedic. I'm not sure that everything's completed yet, in the sense of, I know that, I believe that he's going to be working with the fire department.
What I would include in that letter, Charlie, because I know that's just recently been resolved, as of yesterday, that they have notified the chief of the dates of the, because there was some confusion, the person they were using was not, was not under medical supervision, which was a requirement of the agreement. So what I think you need to include, even though that's been resolved, is Mr. Clausen is to let the fire chief know who they're using. So obviously, we know now, but in the previous shows of the year, he had not. And they do have the flexibility of using other agencies. They have chosen to use Halifax for the rest of the year, but next year, they do have that flexibility as long as they're under medical supervision. So we want to make sure that he remembers that he does have to let the fire chief know, not our office, but the fire chief.
As far as police details are concerned, I talked with Ted about this. At this point, there's been no necessity for police details at the shows, so if the chief felt otherwise...
If you want to force me to go to this one, I...
Yes, you can be my body guy.
And if you need somebody to hold the weapon up, I'm trained.
Body guy, shoot me.
But, I mean, the chief does have the ability to say that details need it if it comes up, but that hasn't been...
Yeah, again, we've never had an issue with any of the horse shows, so this plan not required.
Also, we need, we're supposed to be getting a list of vendors for each show. We've not gotten that for any of the shows this year. The Board of Health is looking for information on the lake swell testing, which needs to be received before this coming show. And also, they haven't gotten a list of food vendors, so it might just be the one for this year, but they still haven't gotten at that, so I'm...
My eye is twitching, that's for sure. It's like literally twitching.
I'm going to contact Mr. Clausen later this week about those requirements, remind him that those are all stipulations in the new contract, other than the new consent agreement. We'll, when you hear back.
You have any idea when that consent agreement got to the courts?
I would hope it got there a couple of weeks ago, but I, as Larry told me, they could take a couple of days, they could take a few months.
Yeah, that isn't something that they jump on usually.
But I think that we were all in, you know, sort of a gentleman's agreement, but...
Yeah, but even, the thing is, like I said at the beginning, if he's operating six multi-day shows, he's operating under the new consent agreement.
Right.
So he needs to abide by all the stipulations, not just those that are favorable.
Oh, you heard my speech a couple of weeks ago, but it's a book, it's, you just don't read certain chapters, so...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, 100%, you know, I bumped into his son, you know, who's been helping. I know Scott's been away or trying to be away, so, yeah. So hopefully, we can work it out.
And I'm good to go, otherwise.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Always, always appropriate. I'm moving, I'm moving it.
I'm going to second it.
I'm going to ask for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
That's it.
Wow. It is a good...
Thank you all, and good night.